Educating, informing, serving. TV. Keeping government honest.
Welcome, everybody. We are here for this year's annual school and town meetings. Somehow, they managed to lose all the gobbles. So I have a rubber mallet, which hopefully works just as well. They tell me you can throw it just as far as the wooden mallet. So if we have to use it, we will. My name is Ray Masuko. I am your moderator tonight. And we're going to take up the school board first this year. We do them in even years. We do the select board in odd years first. So this is the school board's turn. And I'm going to go through some procedures and a few announcements before we get started. As always, we're going to ask you to be respectful, civil, not talk out of turn. And I'll mention those again several times if I have to. A reminder, the concession stand is open if you feel so moved to have something after dinner. Not a bad turnout for the early school board meeting. I'm happy to see that. So let me walk you through some of the things we're going to be talking about, and then we'll move on into the meeting. Cell phones, pagers, anything that makes a noise, buzzes, beeps, rings, or anything like that, including your neighbor, turn it off, put it on some kind of very, very silent mode. That's one good use of the mallet. If it goes off, we'll remind you of that again. I've been an offender of that, so I'm particularly sensitive to it. Why don't we start out with a pledge of allegiance? We like to do that every year before the proceedings begin. So if you'll all stand and join me. American flag down here to my right, your left. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you plan to participate in any way this evening, please join us and come down as close to the front as you dare. You should note that if you're up behind the railing, I can't call on you. You have to be part of the body, which is everybody in front of the railing. And if I can't see you, I can't call on you. My eyesight's not bad, but it's not what it was when I was born with 72 years ago. And even though some of you that I know, I may not recognize, because some of us are older or we've changed in looks. We have a handicap seating for anybody who requires it, both down front and up back. If you need assistance, let us know and make sure that assistance is available to you. In the event of an emergency, please note that there are five exits. One on either side here, one to my rear left, one in the inner lobby, one in the outer lobby. I feel like an airline attendant pointing them out. So in the event of the emergency, no oxygen masks will drop down from the ceiling, but help your neighbors exit the building if you have to, but do it in an orderly fashion. As always, the meeting will be conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order, except as modified by state statute. You can't change the state law, but you can choose to modify Robert's rules with a two-thirds majority vote of the registered voters in the House tonight. General Robert has pages and pages of rules for decorum during a debate. I hope that it won't be necessary to remind you to conduct yourselves in a civil and polite manner. In particular, sometimes folks have little conversations, little pockets of conversations going on while either the moderator is speaking, some of the board members are speaking, or members of the public are speaking. Please don't do that. It's disrespectful. It distracts from the conversation. We're here to vote on some very important matters tonight. We're going to be talking about an awful lot of money, some of which we'll vote tonight, some of which we're going to vote tomorrow. But you're here, you went to the trouble of coming out to the meeting to vote, to be educated, to listen. So please, be respectful of everybody else in the audience and keep those conversations to an absolute bare minimum. If you have the need to have a full-blown conversation, take it out back. You know, when I'm not doing this, not practicing law, I'm a concert promoter, and I put on concerts, and I tell the same thing to the fans. If you came to listen to the music, listen to the music. If you came to talk, take it up back. When you're called on, you can only be recognized by the moderator. We'll do it with a show of hands, or a hand. Please stand when you're recognized, if you're able. If not, stay right where you are. We have runners with microphones. Wait for the microphone so we can actually hear you. There hasn't been a member of this body who did not need a microphone since Jim Bigelow passed away, and that was about 35 years ago. No matter how loud you think you are, your voice does not carry across this big room. You wait till the microphone gets to you, then you can speak. Address your comments and questions to me. If there's something I can't answer or choose not to, I will redirect it to somebody who can. If you have a board member you want it directed to, let us know that, and we'll see if they're able to answer your response. Only registered voters in the town of Rockingham are permitted to speak at the town meeting. There are some exceptions. I will recognize without objection appointed officials, those who work in the town and school offices, who are here to further explain, or describe, or give out further information, even though they're not residents. Unless I hear an objection to that, I will allow them to speak without a request. For other non-residents, they're only allowed to speak upon request and only after a vote of two-thirds majority of the registered voters here in the body. So just because you're here doesn't necessarily mean you get to speak unless you're a registered voter. Otherwise, you have to get two-thirds of the body to agree. Those of you who are eligible to vote were given a card when you came in tonight, your voter card. Those are going to be used potentially in a couple of different fashions. The purpose of those is first to allow us to identify you as a voter who has passed through the checklist. If you remember, a year or two ago, we had an issue, we had more voters than people who came through the checklist. We have addressed that. We don't believe it's going to be an issue, but you've got to have that card if you want to vote. On a division or a show of hands, if we call for it, you will hold up your card. And the JPs here that are here tonight will go around counting the cards. And they're going to notice if you vote twice. I don't know why you would. You just counteract the first vote you made. But with a division or a show of hands, it's really a show of cards. On a paper ballot, the clerks will check off your name as you come down here for the article on which you are voting. As you know, we can have a paper ballot upon request that is supported by at least six other members of the assembly. So you need seven people all together, one to ask for the paper ballot, six others to support that request. Some articles require an Australian ballot tomorrow, and I'll mention those as we go through. They will be taken up for discussion only. We don't take action on those tonight, but we may have questions on those here tonight. The polls tomorrow will be open between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. at the Masonic Temple down the street on Westminster Street. I'll try to make any rulings I make impartially and correctly as I can. Any ruling of mine can be challenged immediately after the ruling. I will explain my ruling, and if you're not satisfied, all it takes is request to challenge the ruling and put it to a vote of the assembly. Debate on the motion to appeal, the ruling of the chair is generally in order. In keeping with our usual custom of alternating the meetings, as I mentioned, the school gets to go first tonight. Let's see if I can shorten up some of these, but without leaving out any substance. In taking questions, I would try to get all the way around the room once before anybody gets to speak a second time. Under the rules of the assembly, you only get to address the same issue twice, so you don't get a third and a fourth shot or bite of the apple. Overall, we have set a limit of 10 minutes to any individual, whether it's the first time or the second time they've spoken on a particular item. You can't give away your time to anybody. You can't cede anybody else. That's your time. Use it or lose it. Don't feel compelled to take up all 10 minutes every time, but if you have something that hasn't been already discussed and you want to further address it, that's why we're here. After we've gone through everybody who wants to speak once, we'll go back around the room, making sure everybody's had the opportunity. And then at some point, somebody will call the article, and we will take up that vote. I will read each article in order, and then I will ask the body what action they wish to take. A motion must be made and seconded. I will then restate the motion before discussion on the motion begins. In most instances, only two amendments will be allowed in the floor at any one time. That is one amendment to the main motion, and then an amendment to the amendment, when that's appropriate. It requires a motion, a second, and two-thirds vote to cut off debate and call the question. And you have to be recognized to make that motion. You can't just shout out, "Call the question, call the question." Recognized, make that motion to call the question, and then we will vote on that. The motion to close debate is not debatable. Seems sort of like an oxymoron, but that's the way it goes. By state statute, once the voters have acted on a question and taken up the next article, they cannot reconsider the action at the same meeting. So if you don't like what we did on Article 3, and we get to Article 7, you can't back up. Always forward, never back. Voting is by voice vote unless the chair is in doubt, in which case there'll be a division or a show of cards. Any voter can call for that division as long as we have not started on the next article. Any voter can also move for a vote by paper ballot, which I mentioned. Motion made for a paper ballot, supported by six, and we will then do that. Voting on a paper ballot, the JPs will set up down here. There'll be a couple of checkers over here in this corner. You will come down the aisle on the left side of the auditorium, my right. Have your card checked off. Come through the line. The JPs will show you where to put the ballot you wish to cast and where to discard the other ballot. And then you will exit, go back to your seat up that side of the auditorium. Action under other business, which is the last article we take up, cannot require the expenditure of funds, nor can it be binding upon the town. It's essentially an advisory time, when you can state a position, make a request, things such as that. But you can't vote to spend money under that article for other business. Let me introduce your school board over here as we go down the line. We have school board clerk and also town clerk Kathleen Niedhoff, superintendent Chris Pratt, school board members Priscilla Cleff, George Smith, Rick Holloway, Margot Gia, and Kristin Swarthout. Thank you. Can't see people on yet.
Priscilla Lambert.
What'd I call her?
Priscilla Cleff.
Cleff?
Name, name.
Okay. Priscilla and I have only known each other for 65 years. I'm sorry. She's been Lambert for 50-something of those years. So Priscilla Lambert. Sorry, Priscilla. Again, the chit-chat in the audience, keep it to a...really, don't do it. It's just not polite, and we want everybody to know what's going on. Under tonight's article, Article 1 is the election of officers, and by law, that will occur tomorrow during the all-day Australian ballot. That is an article that is not a topic for discussion this evening. We don't talk about who's running for the board. I've been asked to read an addendum to the warning, or an explanation of the warning. Union High School Number 27, Article 6, was inadvertently left off the ballot for the town of Rockingham voters to be voted on Tuesday, March 3, 2020. Therefore, this article will be voted on at the Bellas Falls Village Election Day, to be held on Tuesday, May 19, 2020. All Rockingham voters, village and town, who wish to vote on this article will need to return to the polls or request an absentee ballot for the meeting on May 19, 2020. So that article is not being voted on. All right, so let's move on to the warning for tonight. The legal voters of the Rockingham Town School District are hereby notified and warned to meet this evening to take up, it looks like, six articles this evening. I'm going to read those. Like I say, we'll restate them, and then we will move on for discussion, voting where voting is allowed, and then to the next article. So Article 1, Mrs. Lambert?
I move to accept the reports of the town school district officers for the last year as presented.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Never had that before. We will restate that article. To hear the reports of the Rockingham Town School District officers for the last year and to take action thereon. Article 1 is now open for discussion. Do we have any questions? Hearing none, we are now about to take action to accept the reports of the Rockingham Town School District officers for the last year and to take action thereon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have passed Article 1. Article 2, to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2019 fund balance to create a reserve fund to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham schools and authorize the board to expend said funds. Kristin, I believe this is your article.
I move to authorize the town school district to apply the sum of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2019 fund balance to create a reserve fund to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham schools and authorize the board to expend said funds.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Article 2 is open for discussion. What's your pleasure, folks? Anybody want to ask any questions about that article? Yes, Mr. Lambert? Where's our runners? Do we have microphones, Ed? Do we have Ed? Tell you what, David, you're going to have mine.
Sounded like we were born in 2000. Space on.
Hang on a minute, David. Technical difficulties. At the town portion of the meeting tonight, we may not authorize a couple of new microphones.
There's nothing wrong with the microphones.
All right.
We've got enough microphones.
All right. All right, Mr. Lambert?
David Lambert. I'm just curious, what is the total 2019 fund balance? Because you've got two articles where you're taking $100,000, I believe, from the fund balance. So I'm just curious what the total fund balance is.
Somebody on the school board want to address that?
$200,000?
We also applied some this year.
Right. I believe it was $293.
It was very close.
It was what?
It was very close to that.
Very close to that.
$202, $293, somewhere in there.
David, if I understand, your question is how much is the current total fund balance? Yeah?
Jessica.
Okay.
And my follow-up would be, what, if we're using $100 for this article and $100 for next article, what's the other $93,000 going to be used for?
To go towards this year's budget.
So do we get a final answer on that balance? I'm not sure.
$298,000.
So I was five off, sorry.
Any further discussion on Article 2? Yes? Is that Ms. Wright?
Why?
Yeah. Oh.
We've explained it every year before.
Since you asked the question, or you don't have?
Test. All right. For those who didn't hear you, Kath, it's Kath Martin.
This is Kath Martin. I was wondering if there's a list of the capital improvements that are contemplated? Like, what sort of things are we planning to spend it on, or is there a plan?
I can answer that question.
There is a list. I don't have it right in front of me at this moment, but it's...Jen?
I don't know if there's a detailed list, but on the table is the middle school auditorium, the seating needs renovation, and then the principals of the other schools we're going to get to the board next year, what was needed.
Paving at the middle schools on the list. Just taking care of the buildings that we put all the money into over the years is constant upkeep. So the surplus money that we have, I don't know if everybody...we've talked about it every year that I've set up here. So the surplus money comes from, mostly from the middle school, where we have to set a tuition rate for the kids coming in from out of town. And when we set that tuition rate, the...somebody from the business office can correct me if I don't explain this correctly. So we set a tuition rate at the beginning of the year. We set it this year. I forget how much it was. Then the state, at the end of the year, the state average, and if we aren't within a certain percentage, we either need to pay it back, or they have to pay us the overage. And we typically come in under, and then the other towns have to pay us back that difference. So that's where this surplus comes from. And yes, there's...
And also, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the business office does its best job to estimate how many people are going to come to the middle school from Athens, Westminster, and Grafton. And this prior year, more students came to the school, which also created a surplus.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Can I add one thing? That it's not really a surplus. It's revenue coming in. It's just called surplus because it's extra money that we have gotten. Revenue would be a better terminology probably for it, because it's incoming. Or return on, you know, on our money.
Any further discussion on Article 2?
Paul, you may be the one person that we can hear.
The only thing I'm concerned about is these schools have just been renovated. They're brand new.
And when you happen to mention about the auditorium chairs, the Bellas Falls High School has the original chairs when that school was built. And I don't believe we need $100,000 already. So I'm going to make a motion to put $50,000 rather than $100,000. I'd like to reduce it.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do I hear a second?
I hear.
Okay. All right. The main motion has, Mr. Reese has moved to amend that by reducing, effectively by reducing the amount from $100,000 to $50,000. Paul, do you wish to speak any further to that, or?
No. The only thing I'm concerned with is the overall budget's around $10 million. $10 million. And when I look at the high school, I believe at that meeting, I was told there's only 306 students in that school that was built for 720. I honestly believe it's time the superintendent and the boards work to close one of the schools because we have more than enough room in these facilities.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Hearing none, are you ready for the question? Motion's been made and seconded to reduce the amount, or to reduce the amount from $100,000 to $50,000 from the fiscal year 2019 fund balance to create a reserve fund to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham schools and authorize the board to expend said funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays do have it, and the amendment is defeated. Are you ready for the vote on the article, the main motion itself? That motion, with the amendment having been defeated, is to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2019 fund balance to create a reserve fund to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham schools and authorize the board to expend said funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article 2. Article 3, to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2019 fund balance to create a reserve fund to offset expenditures in fiscal year 2023 in order to reduce taxes. Mr. Holloway, I think that's your motion.
I move to authorize the town school district to apply the sum of $100,000 from fiscal year 2019 fund balance to create a reserve fund to offset expenditures in fiscal year 2023 in order to reduce taxes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded, and do we have discussion on Article 3? Hearing none, we will take up Article 3, to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2019 fund balance to create a reserve fund to offset expenditures in fiscal year 2023 in order to reduce taxes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article 3. Article 4, shall the voters of the Rockingham Town School District approve the school board to expend $10,888,771.78, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education funding of $19,621.46 per equalized pupil. The projected spending per equalized pupil is 12.64% higher than spending for the current year. Ms. Gia?
I move that the voters of the town school district approve the school board to expend $10,888,771.78, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $19,621.46 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 12.64% higher than spending for the current year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on Article 4. Rick, can you... Rick, can you stand up and introduce yourself?
All right, does that, can you hear me now? Great. So this is an increase about eight times the rate of inflation, 800% of inflation. And we have fewer kids than ever. Help us understand that.
It's tough. So the increase in per equalized student is different than the increase on the entire budget? So the, does anyone remember what the overall increase is on the budget? I thought I had it written down, but I don't seem to find it. So the per equalized student is a state... Kristin?
So I can assure you that the budget has not increased by that amount. The budget was mostly level funded, other than the teacher salary increases and healthcare expenses. The equalized pupil is a number that the state of Vermont gives to us. And I actually called the state to try to get an understanding of why we went... We basically dropped over 20 equalized pupils for what they gave us to work with for the budget. Our student numbers are actually up by about three or four students, they're not down. Part of it is, there's a lot of equations that go into it, but they use a two-year. They look at 2020, and they look at 2019. And the prior year, they looked at 2018 and 2019. In 2019, we did drop real students. So when you took that drop with this year, our numbers were down. Plus, the law used to provide a 3% cap in how much you could drop in equalized pupils. But Act 46 penalized towns that did not voluntarily merge. So we lost the benefit of that cap, which also affected our numbers. But it is really hard to understand. I mean, that's, I can try to answer more questions, but I did get an email from Brad James, which I can...
And we just want to also point out, so, again, the equalized pupil is a state calculation that is given to every community. It changes year to year, and it's based on, students are weighted depending on different criteria. And so although we have gained a few students, the weighting criteria, as Kristin has wonderfully explained, this very complicated formula is causing what looks like such a huge increase per equalized pupil. However, our budget itself has only gone up 3.5%. And again, most of that is items such as the healthcare and benefits and teacher salaries, which are all in contract.
Any further discussion on Article 4? Yes. Microphone is right next to you.
Amy Howlett. So it says on the article, "By Australian ballot." Are we actually passing it now, or are we just discussing it as a point of information?
She was talking about it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the budget, Article 4? As Amy just pointed out, this is not being voted on tonight. This is part of your day-long balloting tomorrow at the Masonic Temple between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. And now move on to Article 5.
One thing on the, the equalized student does not give you a really good thing, as Kristin just told you. And we were working with a bottom line of around 5.63. What is what I've got in my notes. The equalized student is not our actual count of students. It is actually below our actual count of students. The tuition this year, as somebody asked earlier, is $16,000, same as it was last year, for students that are coming in. And that is actually below the state average. So from that standpoint, you know, we're trying to give you the best budget that we can.
All right, Article 5. To see if the Rockingham Town School District will vote to pay its district officers compensation in the amount of chair, $700, board members, $600, and treasurer, $400. And Mr. Smith, I believe this is your motion.
I move to authorize the town school district to pay its district officers compensation in the amount of board chair, $700, board members, $600, and treasurer, $400.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on Article 5? Hearing none, I will restate the motion. Shall the Rockingham Town School District vote to pay its district officers compensation in the amounts of chair, $700, board members, $600, and treasurer, $400? All in favor say aye? Opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have passed Article 5. Article 6, to transact any other business to be brought before the town-school district meeting. And again, no funds can be expended on this article, but it is for discussion. And Mrs. Lambert.
I move to transact any other business to be brought before the town-school district meeting, if any.
That does not require a second, but we are open for discussion. Mr. Reese.
Are you talking about for the $10 million budget?
508, or what we, 508 as of two weeks ago.
Any other business to be, yes, Ms. Martin.
I was just wondering if this is an appropriate time to ask what measures the school board is contemplating with the coronavirus crisis that we're seeing coming down the pike? Is there anything you have to tell us about that, since we're all here tonight?
This would be an appropriate time to ask that question.
Mr. Pratt will be putting on the website tomorrow or the next day a very detailed plan for what the schools are doing.
Yeah, I can comment a little further on that. Today I was working on information from not just the state of Vermont Health, but also New Hampshire, because we're so close to New Hampshire. And so I'm hoping by tomorrow to put detailed information out on how the schools are going to respond, if needed, along with the procedures that we're going to have in place. So, thank you for asking.
Any further questions under other business? Mr. Gaetano? Mr. Gaetano, Mr. Putignano, sorry.
Yes, Gaetano Putignano, live here in the village. So there's several private schools in the area where you could send your student for considerably less than this, with the rate they've used to describe pupil, what was it?
Per equalized pupil.
What, are you guys aware of that, and are you working? Is there anything we could work on? If you could send your student to a private school for about $4,000 less?
Well, I looked at sending my kid to a private school, and it's not $4,000 less. To go to Compass School was a little over $18,000 a year. And if you have a special ed student, which we have a lot of, the price jumps dramatically. That's not included in that. So none of the, none of the private schools include the cost of special education, which is a big hit to us.
But it's $15,933, which is the average tuition of a 7th to 12th grader published by the state of Vermont. Some information from a local nearby private school.
I, as I said, I've applied to send my kid to some of these private schools, and that that number is pretty low compared to what I've, to what we saw. It was Compass School, two years ago, we looked at, and it was over $18,000 to go there.
This is not the Compass School, and it's $15,933.
Maybe we should make a motion to start sending all our kids to private school? I really have no better answer than that.
And it's closer to $11 million with the two articles. It was $1088 to start, and now it's $11 about it.
Can I respond? I think it also depends on what kind of education you want for your child. Some schools are better for other, some students, and some are better for others. When we were returning from my husband being in the military, I looked at private schools in the area and decided that our schools here were by far superior to what I could get in other places for my particular children. I had ones that went on to school, the two girls that graduated from Bellas Falls Junior High School. One's a veterinarian, one was a physical therapist and now a nuclear engineer. They had a fantastic education there. I couldn't have asked for better. And I looked at the comparisons of other schools and decided that that was what was right for them. That may not be right for your child, and it might not be right for someone else's child, but that was what was right for mine. And I know that our cost of $16,000 is below the state average for public education. So you'll have to make that decision for yourself.
Yeah, in addition, some of the other factors that go into, when you're looking at tuition and your students out and closing your schools down, is that in these areas, a lot of rural areas, in order to get students to the private schools, it's either you're going to rely on parents getting, transporting their students to these private schools, which can be a financial burden, or you're going to have to continue to pay for transportation to the SU. So a lot of times, between the two, usually it's not something towns want to do is close their school and tuition out, because transportation can still be a huge cost for the districts. And if it's not on the districts, it's really difficult for some parents to get their child to a private school.
Further questions?
So it says, sorry, $19,621, not 16 that you just said. You just said $16,000, it's actually $19,621 per student?
So that's per equalized pupils, which is different than, again, equalized pupil is based on weighted averages that come through a formula from the state. It is not based on per pupil, so...
But that's the number you're basing your budget on?
It is, what is here in the, we are required by law to put that in the article. It is not what the budget is fully based on.
I'm not suggesting we send our, most people couldn't afford to send their student to a private school. I was simply comparing that it's an option that you could send your child to a private school for considerably less, or some may disagree with the level of care or education they might get.
And I think I'd like to just respond, because I think you bring up an interesting point, and it's definitely always worth considering, and it's something as a school board that we do have to weigh on a constant basis as to what services do we offer? What is the cost of those services? As a public school, we are obligated to serve all students. And that entails a lot of things, and a lot of contracts, and a lot of services that we are required to offer that not all private schools have to offer. And some do, some do not. So when we compare ourselves, a public entity, to a private entity, you have to make sure that you're comparing apples to apples and not always just comparing the dollar amounts, because the services are not always the same. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when we make these bigger statements, that we also are realizing that there's a lot of things that make up those numbers that aren't in, that we're not seeing all the numbers from both entities.
And I think as we move forward, we want to continue to look at an equitable opportunity for all the students we're educating. And it is a correct statement, saying that most private schools don't have to facilitate the needs of students on IEPs. You know, 504s they do, but IEPs, and, you know, that's a lot of students that we're talking about. And special ed drives up the costs in a public school district. And so when you have a private school that does not have to facilitate the needs of students on IEPs, that might not be the viable option for communities that do have a high population of students on IEPs, individual education plans, so...
Any further discussion under other business? Any other discussion under other business today? Yes, Rick?
Sorry, a point of fact, Compass tuition this year is $15,130, just for, get the facts out there.
We're at that point in the meeting where if we have nothing further to bring up, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to thank Margot and Kristin for their time on the school board. They're not running for reelection this year, and they've been a great asset to us. And we have two open seats. And I would, we would, it would probably benefit this greatly if some of you folks would like to join us and try to figure this complicated funding program that the state enforces upon us out. The 3.5% that our total budget is up this year is a total of $774,000. We, the Rockingham School Board, had control of $134,000 of that. $200,000 is controlled by the collective bargaining agreement with the teachers, the union contract. $416,000 comes down from the supervisory union assessment with where we pay for busing and all of that, all of that great stuff. So it's, especially those of you who are in the town, work in the town stuff. This, the, Deb Wright, I don't know if she's out here, but when she joined the school board, she said, "Oh my God, this is, makes the town stuff look like my home checkbook." So... We could use support. This last year was the first year I've been on the school board, six years, where we started with a full seat of people. This year, we're not, we're starting with two empty seats. And hopefully, there's going to be some write-ins or something tomorrow. But, you know, it takes, it takes everyone to run this. So thanks for, Margot and Kristin, for actually sticking it out.
I would echo Rick's comments. You're all here, you're obviously interested. Two open seats in the school board, still time to run that write-in campaign, stand out front tomorrow in front of the polls, ask people to vote for it. You too could be up here next year. So now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you, folks.